Hello.
Jean.
Hi.
Hey, Jean.
How's everybody doing?
We're good.
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 Do we want to go ahead and get started?
Sure. Yes.
Be with me.
Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order. And we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance over Zoom. I'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm not sure that was very smooth, but we did it. Welcome, everyone. Could we do roll call? I'm not sure if I can see everyone. I see Jean, Larry, Tori, Lisa. I think I saw Peggy. Is Sam on here?
I'm here.
There you are. All right. So we got everybody. All right. Could I get an approval of the agenda?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. For communications, we asked people to contact Sue for patron comments and gave people a link if they wanted to sign up. We did not have anybody sign up. So we're going to move to standing committee reports. We'll go around in a certain order here. Tori, if you want to start, if you've had any meetings?
Um, just finance with you. But since Marshall is on the agenda to present, I'll let him do the honors.
Sounds good. Larry?
Just so the folks know that I sent information out to the board members about legislative seminar. I sat in on last week and provided some information and just some thumbnails on what we discussed. That's also in the Board of Education archives. So they're filed away. Also did the same thing. MSBA has developed a COVID-19 page with all kinds of information. I just sent that link out as well to the archive. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Peggy?
I've got nothing.
Okay. Lisa?
I've not had any meetings either.
Okay. Jean?
I have nothing to report.
Myself, only finance, which Tori talked about. Sam?
Nothing new.
Okay. I have one thing I'm going to get into real quick here. I just want to remind everybody, we have a an election that is coming up, although it's delayed. And wanted to let people know, go through who the candidates are in the order that they're going to be on the ballot. It is Jean Pretto, Stacy Kenner, Richard Vagan, Jeff Wolman, and Peggy Hassler. All right. Come on, work. Hold on. Okay. Our next item is action items by consent. Anyone have anything that needs to be pulled from action items by consent? Okay. Can I get a motion for action items by consent?
Peggy, you're muted. Sorry. I would like to make a motion to approve the action items by consent.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Our next item is the Hegeman Elementary School Report. Principal Julie Durham. You're up.
Okay. Jessica, all right.
Julie, go ahead and click resume slideshow. Here, let me, there you go. Now you should be able to go forward.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I'm going to thank you guys all. It's nice to see you in this very new way of meeting everybody now and staying connected. I'm getting really good at these Zoom meetings for sure over the course of these last few weeks. So I'm going to go through and share Hegeman's progress. I'm proud to share the progress that we have attained throughout this school year. I'll highlight our academic progress, your information about our social emotional learning, as well as steps for our future. As the new leader at Hegeman, it's been super exciting this year to learn about the community, identify strengths at Hegeman, and also set goals for our future. And next school year, we're already talking about things that we're going to be updating. Our mission and vision was created way before I arrived at Hegeman with staff. We're going to continue to look at this as we grow and also continue to look at how this will align with our portrait of a graduate ideals. And this is one area that I know our leadership team will continue to look at and make changes as we go. As I share with you our growth this evening, you will see our focus around our school improvement goals and our consistent review of our progress. Looking at our Hegeman enrollment, as you know, with redistricting at the start of 2017, we saw a change in our population at Hegeman and we grew substantially. With that was an increase in our EL population. We're currently serving about 67 students receiving EL services. When we look at our IEP population, we currently have around 90 students that are on IEPs and receiving additional services with special school district. As we look ahead to next year, we are monitoring kindergarten enrollment. With our new kindergarten enrollment system has been going very well and allowing parents to get on and enroll online, which has been wonderful, especially with the state that we're in currently. It was like perfect timing for everything that's occurring. When we look at current enrollment by grade level, we have about 424 students, early childhood through fifth grade at Hegeman. Early childhood, we have an AM and a PM session. And then our kindergarten group this year, we have four sections, which isn't something Hegeman has had a lot in the past. So that was new for us. It's been great and we've learned a lot from that process. Grades one through five, we have three sections each. I know a question that came up on previous board meetings. Principals were asked, how many of our current kindergarten students went through Melville's Early Childhood Program? And approximately 28% of our current kindergarteners went through Melville's Early Childhood Program. We look at our attendance over the last five years. We have, we have gone down a bit. Our school improvement goal was 96%, so we're just under that. We'd have quite a bit of illness in winter that did bring us down a little bit. We're going to continue to reflect our practices, search for new ways to reach our families. As we know, in elementary school, it's really having those conversations with parents and the importance of having their children come to school. We're going to move on to MAP data. I have this broken into grades three to five. So when we're looking at third grade, our math and EL percentages were above district and state average in 2018-19. When we talk about our third grade, we departmentalize at Hegeman. So I have one teacher that teaches math, one that does writing, and one that does science and social studies. They all teach their own reading, kind of teaching to their strengths. We also have EL co-teaching and writing, and we plan to expand that next year. When we look at fourth grade, again, our numbers at Hegeman for MAP for 1819, we were above district and state average in math and EL. Fourth grade received training today to pilot Project Lead the Way. That was supposed to happen this school year, so hopefully we'll be able to continue that into next school year. I know they're excited about that. And our fourth grade team this year has really worked on that RTI model that we've had in the past and really providing some additional interventions to our students that proved to be successful. When we look at fifth grade, our math scores and MAPs in fifth grade and 1819 were above state average, not district. And our reading was above district and state average. Some of the things we did this year in fifth grade is we had co-teaching with SSD in math. We also looked at our comparison schools at Avery Elementary, Cedar Springs, and Antonia around us. And I actually contacted two of the principals there and getting new ideas of things that we can look at. All grade levels were having conversations around our data and really looking at those bubble kids and common areas that we can really focus on. Looking at cohort data, we see that we're seeing growth in math and EL from third to fourth. We haven't seen that in fourth to fifth. Some of the additional things we're doing in fifth grade are we've done. Teachers have, in fifth grade, have received training on the co-teaching model. We are making tweaks to their schedule next year. We're going to continue to increase SSD co-teaching. We're adding writing next year. This year, we visited the sixth grade academies. We, myself and the fifth grade teachers went over there to gain insight on what our students are going to be going to next year and how we can support that. And as a year three CCI school, we're going to continue to look at that and how we can use our data to really drive our PDSA cycles. And I think that's going to be a huge focus for us next year. Looking at iReady. As a school, you can see on the left was our winter and on the right was in the fall. You can see less red, more green. We were showing growth at each of our tiers. And then schoolwide, you can see in our four areas that are measured in iReady, the light, the light bar was where we were in the fall. And the one above that, the darker bar, is where we were in the winter. So we're seeing growth there as well. And this is overall schoolwide. So again, you can see throughout our grades, the blue was fall and the red was winter. And we've made progress in all areas. And we're going to continue to analyze that data. Reading. This is just students on grade level. This does not include students that have made years worth of growth. As you can see, we have a focus in fifth grade and we're going to continue to look at that. They used, they were piling iReady reading this year. And when they gave that assessment, it was showing less students on grade level. They reassessed them using the Lucy Cawkins running records right before spring break. And we had 57% of our students on grade level. So we will continue to monitor those efforts and continue to talk about that in our meetings. This is our reading iReady pilot. We had four grade levels that piloted iReady reading and just wanted to show a snapshot of how, what that looked like. Here were our reading mastery connect scores in third through fifth grade for fall and winter. So the progress you can see there. And this is our IPI engagement, level of engagement in fall, winter, and spring. We were 88% in the fall, 92 in winter, and 94 in the spring. Panorama, looking at our social emotional needs on the school improvement plan that was created before I arrived. They set a goal of a 3% increase in these three areas. We have met those goals or either at or above what the goal was set, which is exciting. Some points of pride, student growth from fall of 1819 around panorama, self-management, engagement, and so sense of belonging were three areas that our students felt like they were doing better. And staff growth, school climate, progress, professional learning around social emotional, and teacher reflection were points of pride with our staff from fall 18 to 19. We are moving towards zones of regulation. We had training in January with Bria Perry and SSD. We're going to, we're planning on full implementation in August. And we've been piloting parts of that to support the social emotional needs of our students. These are the areas that we've really focused on around continuous improvement. We were just completed year two of CCI. Those data, really focusing on data with our PDSA cycles, looking to increase our co-teaching both in EL and SSD and our Project Lead the Way efforts in fourth grade. We were able to add some extracurriculars this year. Robotics and gardening were two new areas for Hegeman, and we hope to continue those next year. Community partnerships that we have. And they've helped us in a variety of ways, especially now with what, everything that's going on. And I just want to end with, I arrived at Hegeman end of May as I transitioned with Dr. Andrews. And I learned really fast the importance of family. Hegeman puts students first. And it's very clear and evident, especially now with our situation. I'm really seeing that and how we're staying connected and supporting our families and our teachers during this. And I just cannot thank the Hegeman community enough for a great school year. And I'm looking forward to the continued progress ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay. Moving on to Oakville High School data report. Principal Sunkett.
Hold on one second.
Okay. Am I in now, Jess?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's well during this time. It's really an interesting time for everyone. Never felt that more when looking at the front of our building for my PowerPoint of just how much a place of brick and mortar is more than a place of brick and mortar. It's a place where our family gathered and connected each day. And so really an indication of that. I want to first kind of talk a little bit about our goal and our vision and our mission as a building, then what our current realities are in terms of our data, both our formative data and then our end of the year data as well. And then I'll end with speaking to our school improvement plan and our work this year to really do analysis of that data and what it means and where we'd like to go. Beginning with our vision and mission statement, it is a new vision and mission statement from our previous year. One of the things that was very valuable coming in as the new principal this year was the opportunity to really engage and involve our entire staff in the process of kind of deconstructing our school improvement plan, starting with our vision and mission statement and really identifying our realities, our direction, and whether or not it spoke to what we were, where we were going. And so a little bit of a change there on our vision. Our vision obviously is to prepare students for real world success. And our mission really, we were very happy to hone in on what that actually means and how we would do it through creating collaborative environment of academics, experiences, and relationships. And so those were kind of the three big prongs that we wanted to take a look at. Just some of our demographics, we are currently around 1,700 students. Our graduation rate coming into this year from last year was 96%. And as you can see, our free and reduce IEP, ELL, some of our subgroups percentages there still remain relatively low in comparison to the state and in comparison to our sister school. Our mobility rate is only 1.8%. And so I'll speak a little bit later as we talk about our different subgroups or ethnicity. And again, somewhat different than our sister school on the other side. We have a rather low rate of ethnicity and diversity. Having said that, one of the things that we've really focused in on is still continuing to create a culture and an environment in a school where all persons matter and we thrive. And so we've extended those efforts beyond just the typical demographics to including things that aren't really tracks, our LGBT community, ensuring that we make sure that there's representation for both for gender equality and all of that. And some of our early opportunities this year were some initiatives that we had around girls in STEM and really pushing and ensuring that we were broadening our scope despite the fact that our ethnicity data doesn't necessarily suggest that we have a broad variance there. Our attendance data, I provided longitude length for over the last four years. And as you can see, we're still pushing toward, what is in our CSAT this year, for our 95% for attendance. We ended the year last year with 94.9. And so we're pushing this year for 95% for that. The other chart that I provided you gives an indication of a breakdown of where our students are. So those students that are at the, above the 90% threshold, which is the state's 90-90%, and the different tiers or benchmarks within that and where we rank. And so you can see the breakdown here of our rankings of students who fall within that. What this allows us to do is to really hone in on students who are in this area, particularly our bubble students and those students that are at risk of not making the 90-90. And so while we want to celebrate and have opportunities to incentivize these students, we really want to hone in and make those relationships both with the student and the family for students here who are struggling with attendance. Some of our formative data pieces are around mastery correct, connect. And here are fall and winter benchmarks. These give us indication data wise of our percentage of students who are meeting or approaching our end of the year benchmarks. And so as you can see, we're seeing the expected gains from our fall to our winter benchmark. One of the areas that we were taking a look at is our Algebra II and also our biology as a focus to ensure that, particularly for Algebra II, and I'll talk a little bit about that later when I get to the ELC scores. We're taking a look at those scores and what efforts we need to do to begin to increase those because we did see a nominal drop this year, last year coming into this year. Another formative piece that we use is the IPI Instructional Practice Inventory. Gives us as administrative team an opportunity to get a pulse, a data pulse on engagement is our focus within the building. And as you can see, over our three rounds for this year, we are seeing the expected improvement and deepening of student engagement in the classroom. And so a lot of our conversation in our department meetings, a lot of our conversation in our leadership team meetings centers around these formative data points around both the assessments and around the IPI and how we can continue to provide teachers support and professional development around student engagement and what that really looks like authentically. The next screen is a longitudinal three-year of our EOC data. And I apologize on my screen for my PowerPoint. It was very clear and a snippet from, from my school improvement plan. As I see it now here in this PowerPoint, it's not as clear. So I will walk through distinct data with everyone. One of the things that we really hone in on is our ELA and our math. And I spoke just a moment ago about our Algebra I scores and really taking a look at that EOC and what we can do to continue to improve in that. And so some of the considerations and changes that we made this year were specifically around our ninth grade placement of students coming in. And those eighth graders who had not garnered their Algebra I credit as they were entering and what we did with those students in terms of ensuring that they were in the right placement and receiving the right exposure to curriculum and instructional practices to help improve those scores. And so we'll be taking a look at that data even closer as we enter this year's cohort of ninth graders to ensure that we're making those changes. Another, another intervention that we looked at was around our AMP period and making more meaningful use of that to be able to provide either tiered support or some further tutorial support for students in Algebra I or in those areas for math. The one third thing that we have done to support our continued improvement for, for these four areas is to convene a data team, which is new for the school. And so we provided some early in building PD around the data team process and what that would look like. And we pulled a subcommittee or subgroup of folks from our leadership council, which are department chairs, as well as those persons who participated on our school improvement team from each of the four content areas here, so that that team would be specifically responsible and working with me on data analysis and taking a look at where our areas of need are, where our areas of growth are, and to ensure that we're aligning that and taking that back to the leadership team as a whole in terms of what that looks like in the classroom for instructional practice. As a part of the high school IMSA standards, the college and career readiness and our advanced placement, as well as our post-secondary placements, our other area that we have to take a look at. And so I just wanted you to provide you all the data on those pieces. We continue to make more than satisfactory growth in those areas. And so I'll speak a little bit at the end of the PowerPoint when I get to our school improvement goals of how we will continue our efforts to continue to ensure that students are not only meeting these standards and we're meeting the IMSA standards with it, but also that we are doing the things within the building in terms of practices to ensure that this, these aren't just numbers, but they really provide students the readiness for post-secondary and what those steps look like. And so I'll speak to those a little bit later. And as a part of, as well, those IMSA standards are our graduation rates. And we're able to capture those in the cohort, which are the four years of a student matriculating through high school, as well as to recoup students for five-year, six-year, and seven-year cohort. And so this provides you that graduation data. And as you can see, we continue to, to make progress as well as to meet the standards and the标准 for the state. Advanced placement data, I wanted to provide a longitudinal look at our advanced placement data. And one of the focus in the building is that we continue to provide opportunities for students in higher order coursework, as well as preparation for post-secondary coursework. And in some cases, like our dual credit classes to provide them the opportunity to do both. And so one of the things we took a look at this year was not just the number of students, which you'll see on a later slide, who are in our advanced placement courses, but those students who, the percentage of students who score a three or above on those tests. And so I wanted to provide this data to show that. And you will see here that we had that broken down even further in terms of the total percentage of students who score three or above on those tests. And so we'll continue to put our efforts toward ensuring that our students who are taking those courses are obviously able to test in those courses as well. College and career readiness, I wanted to provide you numbers on the, on numbers of students who are part of A C T and those advanced placement courses, as I indicated, and the number of tests, students that tested this year. There's some further information on dual enrollment and dual credit and the number of students that we have participating in programs with some of our partner post-secondary schools. And you see those listed there. District wide, both high schools, a lot of wonderful efforts around providing innovative opportunities beyond the high school for students to expand their learning experience. Our My Path numbers are there. As you can see, we have ninety-four students participating in the South Tech program, as well as seventy-four seniors who are participating in the C L E program. I did want to provide some additional information on our co-curricular and extracurricular activities. We provide over fifty clubs and activities there at the school. And one of the things I wanted to kind of do some alignment to and show the correlation of are not only the number of students participating, but the average G P A of students who participate in some sort of co-curricular or extracurricular activity. And then lastly, and I think I'm way above my time, is the information from my school improvement plan. And I'll go through it really quickly, and I know I'm above my time, so I might as well go for it. One of the things that was very important for us to do in, as part of our school improvement work is to really synthesize for our staff, not only what, what our reality is in terms of the data, but what that means for us and then how it translates into, into our goals and where we wanted to go. And one of the things we took care to do was to ensure that not only were we aligning to M C I standards and those requirements and that our actions were toward that, but also ensuring that there was alignment to the district strategic plan and to our portrait of a graduate goals as well. And so as you can see, we kind of tiered overall academic achievement. And our goal is that one hundred percent of staff members would provide the instruction and create a learning environment for students to develop and demonstrate the expectations of portrait of a graduate. And what does that look like? And so the second tier for that became around how we prepare kids for college and career readiness, which is the next step. And you'll see the two goals there, I won't go through them at this point, but the two goes there from our school improvement plan around our efforts to do that. And then the, the top tier of that becomes, so once we have done that, how do we, how does O H S identify that we have broadened those opportunities for a hundred percent of students? How do we measure that? And what are those expected outcomes for us? And if you take a look at the school improvement plan, you'll still, you'll then see these goals drilled down into strategies and then action steps and then action steps within each department as to how they will articulate those goals. And those are just some pictures from some of the great times we've had this year. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, don't worry about going over time. That was extremely informative. I really appreciate all the depth you went into there. And also, I've got to say, I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes out of the in-building data team. That gotta be a great idea with as many students as you have and as many things going on, being able to keep track of that at a building level as opposed to always relying on central office. Seems to make a lot of sense. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We are on to Mike egg roof bids.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Tonight I'd like to consider roof bids for Melville High School and Bernard and Middle School. Melville High School looking at replacing fourteen sections and Bernard would be replacing the entire school. As you know, we have a roof schedule we go off of and Melville and Bernard are both scheduled for the summer. We did our, did a bid process and we had two different contractors that came up a little bit on the suffered schools. And I'd like to start my recommendation with Melville Senior first. If that was, I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid for shave roofing for Melville High School in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, four sixty-three, including contingency and professional fees.
I moved to approve the lowest qualified bid if we need some discussion. Do we need some discussion, Kevin?
If anybody wants to, go ahead and bring it up. I'm good.
Well, I, I do want to mention that I was a little disappointed that our next door neighbors at Bade Roofing couldn't, you know, have won the bid because it would have been nice to keep it in the neighborhood. But aside from that, they both have done work for us in the past, which apparently was satisfactory. So I have no objection.
And I'd, and I'll just say something, I think Beatty, the size there, I think would have been too much for them to do both roofs this summer anyway. Melville's pretty good, a lot of work, and then Bernard is as well.
Right.
So I think going with the two different contractors will, that'll give me more confidence of what could have done this summer.
Good. I'm ready for motion. Okay. Sam seconded.
Sam seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion passes. And Mike's got one more.
Okay, I'll move on to Bernard and Middle School. I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid by Beatty Roofing for Bernard Middle School at the amount of six hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, including contingency and professional fees.
I need to repeat that, Kevin.
No, just say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, the unfortunate topic of the night, COVID nineteen updates. And I guess, Mike, you're going to start us off with facility projects.
Give me one second here. Yeah, I just kind of over some facility. What we got going on facilities? First, I'd like to first give a shout out to all my staff, custodians, maintenance, to groundskeepers, all my guys, my foreman, my supervisor, John Tucker, for doing great job for everything they've done here the last few weeks. So gotta give them a hootos out to all them. So great job. Um, I did talk to Marshall and Dr. Gaines till the day about that school is canceled for the year, accelerating some of these summer projects, as you can see. So we're going to try and get the H V A C project. Talked to them this morning. They're looking at maybe start doing some staging on next Monday. Talked to Julie Durham, so she's all good with that. Roof replacement, now that we got it approved tonight, I will talk to them. Then maybe probably mid-bay because some of the material coming in still. And then asphalt seal and stripe, once we get that approved, we will try and get them on board as soon as possible. Some classroom connectors, we're going to have a, do some connectors throughout the district. And then our J C I energy management upgrade, we've been working on. We're pretty much on track on that. We're going to get them in the buildings to complete that job as well as soon as we can. Summer cleaning supplies. As y'all know, we got one custodian working per building, they're in there sanitizing the rooms, receiving packages, U S mail. Now that school is canceled, we kind of started, started our summer cleaning a little bit. It's kind of a four step process, you know, cleaning the light fixtures, walls, and we clean the furniture, take those out to the hallways and we scrub and wax the floor. So we're going to try and do the, get into the rooms, do the light fixtures, work on the walls, get those all cleaned, then we'll kind of get a couple of steps done before we get our full staff back in. So we'll have a few kind of a jump on it for the summer. Grass cutting, we've been working two man teams, cutting grass, it's working out great. We just in the middle of our third cut, so the guys are doing great. They're maintaining their social distancing and they're doing a great job. And it's kind of, I talked to Dr. Gaines the other day, it's kind of moving a little bit quicker that there's no interruptions, no cars on a, on a property. And it seems like they're, with, with a little bit on the property, we're getting a lot quicker. Usually takes about seven to eight days to get through the district. We're doing about three to four days with no interruption. So it's kind of going real smooth. So any questions on any of that?
Yes. Mike, could you briefly explain classroom connecting corridors?
Those are kind of like we did over at Mosaic, we're connecting the two rooms.
Oh, okay. Okay, I get it.
So we got, get some of those connectors that we're working on this summer, the ones that are, we've done the in-house ones that are drywall, which we could do ourselves. But these are the brick and some of the glaze block that we have to get a outside company in to do the demolition. And then they put a header up above and we finish off with our, our carpenter finishes it off.
Okay. And do you know off the top of your head which schools that includes?
Um, I know Beerbomb, Trot Wine, and Oakville Middle.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mike, are you expecting or have you seen any issues from a people perspective with like construction labor for the summer projects as far as labor with COVID?
I have not. I've talked to a few of them and no, I have not at all. I mean, they're all, they all seem to be, I guess they're essential and they're ready to, they're ready to roll.
Okay, so apparently not many illnesses then are not seeing problems.
Correct.
Okay.
That's good. Glad to hear it.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you.
Katie was going to update us on food distribution next.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First, definitely want to give a big, big thank you to all the school food staff that have stepped up during the school closure to provide, as you can see, thousands of meals for our students without hesitation. And that also thank you extends to our transportation, our bus drivers who have transported these meals to our different sites. We couldn't do it without them. So it's, it's definitely a team effort. And we've now got the principals and the building staff involved helping distribute the meals, which I want to thank them. I think it's fun to see the kids in the cars recognize their teachers or their principals as they drive through. So it's, it's, like I said, it's definitely a team effort. But just gave you some data where we're at. This actually includes today's numbers that we've served twelve thousand meals up to date. Starting this week, as you guys know, we switched to the two day distribution, so twice each week. On Mondays, we distribute three meals, including breakfast and lunches, and then Thursdays too. And I don't think I've shared this with you guys, but with the, the federal reimbursement with the seamless summer option, which is this emergency feeding, those numbers are what we're getting back per meal during the emergency feeding. And as you know, we're going to continue to plan to feed the kids through the month of June. So once again, can't give enough props to all the people out there helping me. I'm just the one that gets to talk to you guys about it. The ones behind me are doing the, doing the work every day, so with smiles on their faces. So I definitely want to thank them. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
If that's okay. I'm just curious, Katie, if, how do, is the federal reimbursement per lunch we actually serve? Or do they have a number?
No, that's the, the number, it's, I reported very similar to what we do during the school year. So for all the twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-three breakfasts, we're getting two dollars and twenty cents for each one of those. It's just a flat rate and I just report a number to them.
Gotcha. I didn't know if, you know what I'm saying, if you had to give exact numbers after the fact or how that worked. So I was just curious.
No, we've actually submitted some of that already because it's part of the emergency feeding was in, in March. So that is already, that claim is already out there and sent. So obviously all of April would be the emergency feeding. So half of March is going to be our normal claim and then as well as emergency feeding. So yeah, I just have, we just have to provide a number and.
Good. Thank you.
Long comes the check.
Thank you to you and all of your staff and the bus drivers and everybody else.
Awesome. Couldn't do without them.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thanks a lot, Katie.
No problem. Thank you.
Marshall is going to update us on finances.
Well, right as we were approaching spring break, had a really clear picture of a budget for next year and then good forecast of what we were going to come in at this year. But obviously a lot is, has changed. So really I'm in the midst of just trying to go through what's now a very, a very murky picture, trying to figure out where the dust is maybe going to settle. There's a lot of things going on. So as you can see, you know, one of the factors would be the Prop C sales tax. There's two to three month lag on the revenue flow there from the state. So as you can see, sales tax receipts are obviously down in early April. That will impact this year's revenue as well as next year. The word from Desi right now is, initial guess is maybe instead of planning on the thousand forty-nine reimbursement number for this year, drop down to what last year's number was. If that turns out to be the case, that would be a four hundred thousand dollar decrease in revenue this year over what we were initially counting on. But those are guesses at this point. We have to sort through that. We talk about the classroom trust fund, probably declining because those are funded by casinos. But they do say that any decline in the classroom trust fund would be offset by other increases to the formula. So we would net out to zero this year on that. But we still don't know what to count on for next year. There's just other common sense things, the state income tax deadline being extended to July fifteenth. Obviously, a lot of people are going to pay their taxes later. So then will the state artificially, you know, calculate all of that and move the, move that portion of revenue into, you know, being able to go towards next year's revenue or not? Obviously, income tax, the income tax receipts are down in early April here due to that. So once again, on the withholds for this year, that, you know, we talked about Prop C being estimated down at the fiscal year nineteen level and then the balance, the offsetting classroom trust offset by the basic formula. There's other things on those tax, you know, on the state income tax. Not only do you have impact on the formula, but there's other revenue streams like financial institution taxes and M and M surtax, all things like that that we have to factor in the next year. So many, many moving parts. One of the other things we're dealing with are the school building refunds. So a lot of So a lot of kids that have prepaid for field trips, other student activities. So we've had to put together a plan for the buildings, the school buildings to be able to work with the parents and the students on how to issue refunds. So one option will be for many kids, if we just wait until we're back in session, just to do face to face refunds for those activities. But there are people that are going to want their refunds right away for various reasons, or you've got seniors or people moving away. So for those instances, the parent can make their request to the building principal. And then they'll make the building principal will notify the business office and then we'll just issue a check. One of the things we've put in over the last couple of years is a payment system called RevTrack. So many of the people have made those kinds of student activity payments by credit card. And those are really easily refunded back through RevTrack. So that has really saved us a lot of work. The other, you know, unknown is just the federal dollars that will be flowing to Missouri and then how much we get of that. So, you know, waiting to see how much, you know, Melville will get. We're looking into a FEMA grant that covers certain amounts of COVID-19 related expenses. So, you know, there's just a lot of things right now we're sorting through to be able to provide some kind of a some kind of a budget here in the next month here. So that's just a quick rundown of, you know, some summary items that we're looking at right now.
Marshall, if you don't want to get into this now, that's fine. But I had a question about the Classroom Trust. It has always been my understanding that the casino funds was, what do they call it, zero? You know, it didn't actually, it offset what the state was supposed to put in to the Classroom Trust Fund. Is that correct?
I don't know a lot of the details, other than the fact that casino money basically goes towards funding the Classroom Trust Fund. And, you know, we'll still get a lot of our Classroom Trust Fund money for this fiscal year. But there will be some kind of a decline. I don't have a good idea yet what to expect for next year.
Okay. Larry, do you know what I'm talking about? The zero revenue or?
When they do the general budget, when money comes in from gambling, which was part of that initial proposition, it replaces money in the budget. It doesn't add on to it. It supplants it. It does not supplement it.
Right. So wouldn't that, wouldn't the lack of that money mean that then therefore the state would have to buck up for it?
Well, what Desi is telling me right now is for this year, there'll be some kind of a decline in the Classroom Trust amount. But whatever that decline is, they're going to make it up in the other part of the formula. So that the net money will still be net zero. But it's just that our Classroom Trust, the part that they allocate into the Classroom Trust bucket, we end up putting a portion of that into our capital fund in a different manner than what we do with our formula amount.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. Good luck, Marshall. We're counting on you. Thank you. Okay, up next, Brian Smith with an update on the learning plan.
Good evening. So you can see from the the notes in the presentation, I'm assuming that you've all had at least a little bit of a chance to review that. We've really worked hard with regards to the communication of the learning plan. Last time that I know that we were together a couple of weeks ago, we were about ready to roll it out. Previously, we were in two weeks of enrichment and review. And so a couple of Thursdays ago, that was about the time where we were ready to to roll this plan out. So we've worked both with the teachers as well as parents. And so you can see we have plans that are posted online that we continue to update. So you can see the bitlies that are linked there specifically. The parent guide, because we know the significant diversity and ethnicity within our district. Sadie Lewis, I have to give a lot of props to her for being able to to step in and help maneuver some of the technology pieces, was able to help us with some Google Translate features to be able to get the plan translatable into about 100 different languages, which is obviously particularly good for our community. We didn't want our plan to not be available for virtually anybody to be able to understand. And while Google Translate is is not perfect, we're making every attempt to make sure that we can communicate to all of our community. We also continue to have some information that's going to be coming out with regards to seniors, withdrawal of courses, graduation, dual credit, things of that nature. We're right on the cusp of being able to kind of add some pieces to that. And when we do, we'll let parents know, we'll let teachers know, and we'll update those bitlies that you see as part of it. So that way there's one consistent landing spot for all of our communication. And it's not all just individually pieced together. We feel it's really important to have a place where people can go for answers. But what we've also learned in this process is that it's really important for all people who are involved to be able to take a couple of minutes to read the plan for at least the pieces that apply to them. Jess, you want to hit the next screen? Perfect. So one of our next pieces here, we have, we've decided we spent some time researching, making sure that we were trying to make the best decision. So our curriculum technology folks, Alicia Landers and Sadie, as well as our informational technology folks, Paul Westbrook, Sean Owens, and others, spent time to be able to make sure that the platform that we had was the right platform for us. And to quote Paul in terms of this one, we wanted to ensure that the decisions we were making today were also going to be really good decisions that we could look back on nine months from now. And I feel that we were able to really achieve that. We have seen some school districts who have started out really hot with Zoom and have pulled back due to privacy and security concerns. So our team spent some time, maybe a little frustrating some folks who wanted us to be right out of the gate. It took a few days to make sure that we knew what we had. And so I feel like we made the right decision on this particular one. Google Meet is our is our tool that we use for teachers and students to be able to connect in two ways. While we're doing a Zoom, Zoom was really developed as a business model from adult to adult. Zoom was not necessarily designed to be student to student or student to adult. So while they serve a lot of the same purposes and there's a lot of similar function to them, there are some concerning pieces about Zoom and that again, that data privacy piece that's there. We have had over 8,000 kids who have filled out, I should say, parents who have filled out the permission slip form for kids to be able to do that. While that's really, really good, that still leaves us with about 2,000. But this is an optional piece. So when I say optional, it's, you know, teachers can have, you know, one way communication using Google Classroom, using Seesaw. They can also have two way communication using Google Meet. So we've simply asked for folks to be able to find platforms that work well for them. While we've tried to lay out the rules and the, you know, the procedures as best as we can, we also knew that we had to give our teachers some professional discretion and autonomy to be able to make the best decisions that work well, given their technology ability at home, as well as their technology comfort. Because not everybody is always necessarily 100% open and in easy accessing when it comes to technology. There's also a copy of the learning plan that's available in print. When I ran the numbers today, we have a Google Sheet that is shared amongst all principals. Counselors can update that and it goes straight to the print shop as well. It's been shared with them. So based upon our our information, we have 43 kids district wide. I think that number is honestly kind of low. And I think as we continue to get into this plan more over the next few weeks, I think we will probably see that number grow some. I'm not expecting hundreds and hundreds, but be honest with you, we weren't really sure exactly what we were going to run into. We just knew we had to try to make sure that every kid has access to the learning plan, whether it was via technology or via paper. And Jess, I'm not sure if there's any more information on a next slide or not. Maybe it's just two. So I think that next piece is is not mine. You know, we're still continuing to get feedback from our from our teachers and from our parents. I've spent a lot of time answering a lot of individual questions. We have done meetings with the elementary, the middle school, and the high school teachers. We've had meetings with elementary, middle school, and high school principals. Our principal, some of our principals have started to conduct Zoom meetings with parents to try to help them understand the learning plan and to address any issues that particular individuals may have. And so while I know that no plan is perfect, I do feel pretty strongly that what we have put in place is about as reasonable as what we could expect. You know, it's not, it is not the most challenging thing in the world, but during times like this, it's very easy to overwhelm people. And so we were trying to be very conscientious on not to overwhelm. We were also trying to make sure to be very conscientious about not underwhelming. So finding the right balance of the middle was where we were shooting for. And while I do think we we have found it, I think different people would look at the plan depending on what their current situation is with regards to resources and if they're working and if they have Wi-Fi and if they have a computer and if they have many other things. So our learning plan was really trying to take into account all of those pieces to try to make it as equitable as possible. So I would be open to any questions that you may have or any concerns that you may have with regards to our current state.
Brian, this is Larry. Do you have a feel for what percentage or what number of students are gonna have to use the the printed learning plan because they they have technology deficiencies?
So I had had some conversation with Paul Westbrook with regards to we have shown within the last 28 days, there's been with K5 that we've had 96% of our kids log into Clever at least once. And so while that isn't necessarily a true indication that 96% of kids are utilizing it at K5, what I, where our concern is at, and I think it's the same concern with every district, is that even though we we made a very great and valiant attempt to put Chromebooks in the hands of every single kid and to make them available, and we've used Vic to be able to help us transport these to kids that maybe wouldn't have a way to get to school otherwise, we're still dealing with some some various issues when it comes to, sometimes people don't want to engage in this process at all. Sometimes people don't, you know, they don't want their student to have a device because they've had previous issues with that. So we have to be very respectful to whatever someone's situation is. So Larry, to try to answer that question specifically, I know that we have 43 on the list. I checked that number just before the meeting started. And so I don't think that 43 is accurate. I just think that there's 43 on the list right now. Because that would tell me that, you know, 99 plus percent of our kids are able to fully access it. And that's not necessarily what we're showing. I think if I were to put an educated guess, I'd say we're probably around 80% connectivity and still struggling with about 15 to 20%.
That's the national average. That's from what I've heard.
It depends on which studies that you're looking at, but it's it's in the ballpark. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Larry.
Every device you don't know. And that's the challenge.
It is. I can, you know, I can speak for our IT team. I mean, they have been just absolutely wonderful. They have done everything that we could possibly ask for to try to help and assist and put a working device in every kid's hand. Our team has really come together and we've received support from special services and I know Dr. De Kemper. There's been a whole slew of people who have really helped us try to make sure that everything can be as equitable as possible. But, you know, despite all of that, we do know that there are some people who are simply choosing to to check out. Whether that's due to there not being a grade being issued, or whether that's due to it just becoming a pass fail. Some people are just simply choosing to not engage, maybe it's what they would if we obviously had a brick and mortar school.
Yep. The good thing is that at least having gone through this process, we have a pretty good idea of if we have to take another iteration in this process, where we'd go. That's the important part.
We've learned a lot of lessons and, you know, and if we had a chance to be able to take these and if we ever had another situation that would arise where we needed to, you know, take our lessons learned and to, you know, be able to implement even quicker, I'm very confident that we would be able to do that. So kind of this is a real life Baldrige problem. If you want to look at all these updates that we've been giving over the last year and a half, we've kind of been preparing for something like this and just not knowing exactly what it was going to look like. This is a worst case scenario, obviously. But I am very proud of our curriculum team, our IT team, you know, student services, you know, our other central office administrators. Our teachers have been absolutely phenomenal. Our parents, by and large, have been very supportive. I think they understand what we're trying to trying to capture. And that is people are many times overwhelmed in these kinds of situations. And we have to be respectful of that. And some people aren't. And some people are, and they've emailed me and they've said, you know, this is underwhelming. I'll just choose that particular word. And while I get it and I respect it, we had to try to make sure that we could create a plan for all of our kids, not just our high academic functioning kids.
Brian, thank you.
Brian?
Yes, Jane.
Brian, I may have missed, I had to step away for just a second, but did we receive any pushback on the Google Meet over security concerns?
No, we spent time vetting that process out. Zoom, you know, has some good features, obviously. There had been some security concerns at the pre K through 12 level. And by choosing Google Meet for our folks, I think we averted some of those potential problems that we could have run into potentially with Zoom and especially a bunch of first time users, because let's be honest, most people had not zoomed until they had to be forced to be able to zoom.
Wish I had some stock in that. Anyway, and then I also heard you mention during what you were saying about the past fail. Did has that, have we come to that conclusion already?
We have. Our team has worked through that and spent the last couple of weeks really working through that. And that's part of both the the teacher plan as well as the parent plan. So K5 will not receive a fourth quarter report card. We just felt it would be very difficult to get the feedback necessary to assess some of the things that we were going to need to assess on. For middle school and for high school, they're moving to a pass fail. So while the third quarter grade still is intact, what we really are pushing teachers to be able to do is to keep in mind the essential learnings, the power standards, what what are the big things that we're teaching in the class and determining whether or not kids have competency in that. We still have to play nice with our post-secondary partners with dual credit. So we have systems in place to be able to honor that work as well as to maintain and be consistent with regards to the systems that we have set up.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jane.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I know, not any questions really, but a comment that, I mean, most and all are, to my knowledge, a lot of universities are going to pass fail too. So I know Mizzou is for sure. But with the caveat that you must beware if you're planning on moving on beyond undergrad to make sure that whatever program you plan to go on, if it's masters or whatever, will accept the pass fail. So you don't take the credit unnecessarily. So.
Our pass fail system ensures that kids that get a pass earn the credit without necessarily negatively impacting their GPA. So basically, the GPA that kids would have had at the high school level stops as of December. And it will pick back up the next time that we are obviously back in session for the fall semester. So it keeps everybody exactly at the same point. We're not allowing certain classes to receive GPA and certain classes to not because there were some folks that were really wanting that. And when you're trying to take care of all the needs of 10,000 kids, you also can't let the needs of a very, very small percentage of kids to drive the needs, you know, to drive those needs and make all kids kind of have to fit in that into that box. So it has not been the easiest of processes, but I have, I'm fortunate to be able to have a lot of good people in which to work with and to work for, and I've received nothing but a lot of support from our folks. So for all those that are on this call, you know, I do want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Megan.
Thanks, Brian. Sounds like that's it. Thanks. Chris, I think we're to you.
Yeah, it's kind of my turn to start talking, I guess, a little bit, just to update on a bunch of just little miscellaneous things. But I think Brian really hit the nail on the head when he mentioned all the work that we've done related to the criteria for performance excellence. And trying to align systems and put processes in place have really, really benefited us over the last four weeks or so. And the training that we've invested in folks has really put us probably in a little bit better position that we had gotten used to not acting kind of just on a whim and willy nilly and that we really wanted to put sound systems and processes in place. So I think that's been beneficial to us. And one of those has really been around how we're communicating with folks on an ongoing basis. So right now we have a thought exchange open with our parents. We're trying to collect the top questions that they have and so that we can respond to those through video next week. A number of our buildings over the last couple of weeks have done Q and A sessions via Zoom or Google Meet with parents. That was mentioned previously. Today, we essentially announced to all the principals that we're going to require that, that that be the case. Those have had quite a bit of positive reaction from folks. And so that's something we want to continue to do over the next number of weeks. Graduation was also mentioned. So a lot of people have had questions about that, you know, graduation is scheduled for May 31st. We had early on kind of snagged an alternate date with Shafitz. But earlier this week and kind of towards the end of last week and then this week, we've had a group of our administrators, our, some teachers, some kids and some of our parents. Right? So senior kids, senior parents come together to talk about prom, graduation, those kinds of pieces. So the building levels are, you know, we're letting them kind of worry about the prom stuff because that's a building level activity. But from a graduation perspective, we ended up grabbing another alternate date in July. And our committee, if you will, came to commit consensus to recommend that graduation be moved to July 19th. They didn't want to move it in June, only have to move it again. So they wanted to move forward with some certainty. So we're locking in the July 19th date as graduation. That'll stay at Shafitz. If we're not able to do graduation at Shafitz on the 19th and we're, the conditions probably don't exist to be able to do it here either. Our senior students on the committee seem to express that if we got really past that, we got into August, that folks would begin to scatter probably a little bit too much and that there wasn't much interest in trying to do something in August, if we had to get to that point. So tomorrow, our seniors and senior parents will find out that July 19th will be our new graduation day. And hopefully things will be in good shape so that we can have kids walk across the stage. It's probably the one thing that I've been probably most adamant about that we wanted to have an in-person graduation ceremony if at all possible. I mean, I was willing to do it at Thanksgiving or Christmas or whatever, but the kids really didn't seem to want to go past August. So we got July 19th for that. You know, a lot of people are asking us about the fall and what is planning look like for the fall? What are we going to do there? You know, as, as Brian mentioned, you know, the curriculum team has been really focused on the current year and, you know, kind of everyone has just couldn't continuing to recognize that we had problems and challenges ahead that we needed to resolve in the immediate term. And with the announcement of a closure for the year and that we wouldn't be back in session. We're starting, we've kind of moved and we've can't kind of handed off much of that day-to-day piece to our principals and teachers, they're taking a lead on that. And now we're starting to focus more on how do we bring this year to a close? What does that look like? And then what is the start of next school year look like? We don't have any answers at this point, but that's something now we're really starting to focus more and more energy. Another kind of question that we get, and we can see it in the thought exchange results that we have so far. You know, people are asking about summer school and what that's going to look like. Desi had formed a summer school task force, kind of looking at options. We've provided quite a bit of feedback into that task force of, you know, things that we think we would like to see or things that would be possible. You know, for a couple of weeks now, when we've tried to make guesses and projections and looking at what's going on, we've used that COVID-19 model developed by the Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation out of the University of Washington. Kind of see what the curve is, see where the numbers lie. And one of the things that we only realized really towards the end of last week was one of the assumptions baked into that model is that schools would not be in session through August. So I think there's maybe growing recognition, at least here locally, that an in-person summer school is probably in unlikely. If it was in person, it's probably not going to be until late July or August. So we've done virtual high school programming for a while now. We know, we know how to do that. We know how to run it. We know what that looks like. We know how to work that. That's not, you know, over, out of the question. But virtual K eight is kind of new. So Desi's been having significant conversations around that and kind of what that could look like. Again, we've certainly made some suggestions in that regard. But we'll see what Desi's recommendations are. But essentially we've got to come up with our plan by the end of this month because the application is due to Desi in, on May 1. So we may be able to just define kind of what we want to do. So, you know, if we do virtual K eight, you know, I, I think that could look like, not will look like, but could look like perhaps something starting in early June and going over the course of almost the entire summer and providing ongoing learning opportunities for kids throughout the course of the, of the summer. But, you know, if we look at enrollment, we're a little bit ahead of where we had been kind of in the past. So we'll continue to pay attention to that and kind of look. But hopefully this task force will make some recommendations here quickly. You can advance the slide. So there are, you know, we operate under a bunch of laws and regulations, not just at the federal level, but at the state level. So early on in all of this, Desi or the commissioner came out and indicated that she would waive any days missed related to COVID-19. Well, that's kind of a mute point now. But there were a number of other requirements in the law that the commissioner did not have the authority to waive. So in two different executive orders, the governor has waived a number of things. So for the class of 2020, he waived the CPR and Heimlich maneuver training requirement, the Missouri and US Constitution test requirement and the civics education initiative tests. All of those are specific to the class of 2020 to make sure that those students would still be able to graduate. For elementary, there's a third grade reading assessment requirement in the law that got waived. Fifth and eighth graders do a physical fitness assessment. That's been waived. There's a technical requirement that we have just around notification requirements and teacher contracts. That got extended for 30 days. And then his latest action was to waive the required end of the year dyslexia screening. So all of those pieces have been waived. There are some things that Desi has kind of remained adamant about, especially when the governor announced closing schools for the year. One of those is an expectation that schools would continue to provide some level of instructional learning services. And the second would be that schools would continue to provide some sort of meal service. Kind of off to the side, there's been a lot of conversation around graduation requirements, not just the graduation ceremonies, but graduation requirements. And what was going to happen in that regard? So Desi has been adamant that they will not waive the 24 requirements that are set by the state. However, they keep reminding us that how we award credit, we do have a significant amount of latitude in doing so. But when you look at our graduation requirements, we go beyond that state minimum, like many others. And we require a 25th credit, that being an additional either a fine art or a foreign language. So that kind of piece above and beyond. So we've talked with the high schools. And our recommendation would be that for the class of 2020, we not require that 25th credit. And we just adhere for the class of 2020 to the state requirements. So that's a one piece of action that we're asking for the board to take. If you guys would consider that now, and then I'll walk through the rest of the pieces.
Um, I'll make the motion to set graduation requirements for the class of 2020 to those required by the state.
And I'll sec, and I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks.
All right. Thanks you guys. All right. Um, you know, what, last week, we did five Q and A sessions with employees. We had done a thought exchange the week before to kind of collect the top questions from our employees. We also allowed questions to be submitted throughout the chat. And questions that we could answer on Friday were a lot more than the questions that we could answer on Monday. And one of the questions that got asked a lot by our employees is, you know, when are we going to have access to the buildings again? And our response was, we don't have an answer to that yet, but we will have an answer to that by the end of next week. So we'll be releasing some of that information tomorrow. Essentially, if an employee needs something to do their job, will we allow those employees to come up, be an appointment through their principal? Right? So they just say, you know, I'm going to be here at 10 o'clock, you know, coordinate that with their principal. That's been easy enough. That's kind of worked for us. Worked for us earlier. We know that can work for us again. When we think about a little bit more widespread access, access, you know, I want to come in and clean my room or gather my things or something like that. We don't know when we're going to allow that. What we do know is that we're not going to let that happen while there's a stay home order in place or that there are limitations on group sizes. So those two, those two conditions are going to have to be lifted before we let employees back in on kind of on a sustained basis or for a little bit longer. And then as we do that, for just cleaning out things, we'll have physical distancing measures in place. On the student side, you know, our students have a number of things here at the schools. You know, so at the high school level, what we're thinking right now is the high schools are going to coordinate with their seniors to get things from their locker. You know, we kind of exist in a world where most kids just carry everything around in their backpack. And kid, you know, there's not a high degree of locker usage. So both buildings have an idea of, you know, that usage and it's a small number of kids. So, uh, once the stay home orders are, have expired or get lifted, we'll allow that to happen. If we look at freshmen, sophomores and juniors, you know, we think maybe the simplest solution at this point is just give them the same locker next year. So when they come back to school in the fall, you know, they, they just got the same locker and their stuff's there. K eight is going to be probably a little bit more challenged of how they could do things, especially as we look at the challenge, the transition for fifth graders and eighth graders. And then at the middle school, we kind of essentially have sixth, seventh and eighth grade hallways, a little bit more than, you know, maybe in the high schools. So again, we kind of have a, a process outline of how we would do that and how we would stagger kids in to do that kind of thing. But again, we're not going to launch that until after stay home orders and limitations on group size have lifted. So those are the pieces that we're looking at in terms of letting people into the building. And really the same kind of things hold for, you know, letting people get into, back into the offices on a full-time basis. A few of us come in and work a day or two a week or, you know, partial day kind of here and there. But the vast majority of our employees are working remotely. Obviously, Mike has folks that are in our buildings every day. Katie's got her teams that are putting out food. But other than that, we had done a pretty heavy lifting in the technology department to get everyone set up really quickly to work remotely with VPNs and all of those other pieces. But we're going to continue with people working remotely as long as that stay home order and those limitations in group sizes are there. And then lastly, you know, I, I kind of mentioned earlier, but just kind of wanted to come back to it again around just questions around the 2020, 2021 school year, what that's going to look like. You know, you see all these news articles and things that, oh my gosh, all these kids are going to be behind moving into the next grade level and all this stuff. But that really is fashioned on this old notion of a factory-based assembly line model of education and that we move kids along around time. And maybe this whole experience pushes us a little bit to think more about learning levels rather than grade levels. You know, I don't know where we're going to end up at 2021. But what I told a couple of groups today is we're just going to take kids where they are in the fall and we're going to do our best to move them forward from wherever they are. And really that's just kind of what we try to do each and every year. Kids don't all start in the same place and they're not going to end in the year, in the year in the same place. So that benchmarking that we do and that we put in place over the last couple of years is going to be ever so important. So we can see where kids are and what supports they need. And as we look forward and Marshall kind of mentioned, you know, these federal stimulus dollars. We had conversations today on, you know, how are we going to be able to use those? Are, is the state going to play a shell game and we're just going to get no additional? Are the, is the state going to play a shell game and we're just going to get no additional dollars? Or are these dollars that we are really going to be able to help kids with? Or are we going to be able to put in additional supports at the beginning of next year? What what are those pieces going to look like? So there's still a lot of unknowns. I'll probably be putting together a group in the next week to 10 days. Kind of help us, help advise us on the reopening, what that could could look like. You know, I'm not making an assumption that we're going to move all kids to the next grade level automatically, nor am I making an assumption that we're going to hold them back. I I think we've got to look at that a little bit more deeply and not just make a trigger decision on that. But what's best for kids and how we're going to move them forward. And based on what I've seen over the last four to five weeks from our staff and our teams, we got the people that can make that happen without a doubt. We've had more people than I could ever hope to begin to name really rise to the occasion and step forward and really do some good work. Either leading teams or supporting teachers or supporting other groups of folks. It really has been amazing to watch people across the district and I couldn't be more proud of everybody. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Hey, Chris, do you have any thoughts if this were to extend into next year? With like how some colleges are talking about the fall, potentially not starting back up? Would it just be more of the same or do you have thoughts that we would try to do something different?
You know, for me, the big challenge that we would face versus what a college would face, right? Is you're talking about 18, 19, 20, 21 year olds and being able to make the transition to new classes, new professors, all of that stuff. You know, part of, if there's been any advantage to this pandemic happening, it's when it happened. Right? So we had built three quarters of a year. You know, we had good relationships with kids and their teachers. We had good relationships with parents. And it's those relationships that have really been relied on through this process. And to try to think about, okay, all of a sudden we have a kindergartner who's never met their teacher and we're going to try to do some sort of online and or blended model with them. I I don't know. That that is a challenge. I don't know how today that we would get around. So, you know, you say, you know, would it kind of be more of the same? It may, it could very well be, but it may be with the same teachers to kind of start out because that's where those relationships are and, you know.
Yeah.
You know, we we talk about, you know, how do we create some sort of closure for grade levels, right? Or, you know, and that relationship between a teacher and his or her students, you know, I mean, whether people like to admit it or not, those classrooms are families, right? And all of a sudden they've been busted up and, you know, our conversation has been, how do we, how do we honor that piece? And then how do we move forward to the next level, which is really all part of this conversation about how we start up the year? You know, or there are so many options out there. You know, we get spitball a lot of different things and we'll have to do that and then kind of narrow all those spitballs down to what's going to be simple, what's going to be reasonable, what's going to be feasible? What can we actually operationalize in the fall and what makes what makes sense? But, you know, I I imagine we're going to have more than a plan A.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay. Move to patron comments. We didn't have anybody sign up for non agenda items. So we'll move on to authorization for closed session.
I'll make a motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under Missouri revised statute 610021 subsections 1 through 21 and 610022 subsections 1, 6, 1 through 6. We're going to cover lease, purchase or sale of real estate, which is 610021, item two. Hiring, firing, discipline or promoting a particular employees, 610021 subsection 3. In preparation for negotiations and employee groups, 610.021 subsection 9.
I'll second that. Sam?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So I know you've all got the link. It's a different Zoom for the closed session. So we'll jump off of here and see you over there shortly.
Great. Thank you.